We call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Crotty.
Ms. Aquamondo?
Present.
Ms. Baralli?
Present.
Mr. Aricello?
Present.
Ms. Inello?
Present.
Mr. Laurentino?
Present.
Ms. Roloff?
Here.
Ms. Thorbik?
Present.
Ms. Traverso?
Here.
Ms. Autorelli?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. Okay, our student representatives.
Hello? Okay, awesome. The high school has been active with academic celebrations and preparations for upcoming events. We proudly held our National Honor Society induction ceremony, welcoming new members who exemplify scholarship, service, leadership, and character. The junior class breakfast also took place, giving the Class of 2027 a chance to come together. Our instant decision day with Caldwell University and Ramapo College was a major success, with 100% of participating seniors accepted. Counselors also continued providing valuable support through Bergen Community College Application Assistance. As we move into December, students are gearing up for Spirit Week, bringing holiday energy to the building. This Friday, 10th and 11th graders will begin scheduling meetings to plan next year's courses. Seniors also have their cap and gown measurements tomorrow, a reminder of how quickly the year is going past. We have several exciting events ahead: our snowland dances this Friday, the pep rally is scheduled for December 19th, and our high school winter concert will take place next Thursday. This month, we are thrilled to also announce that the Rising Falcon Award is being presented to Zuzanna Bobenko, in recognition of her outstanding achievement in academics, character, school spirit, perseverance, and her commitment to building positive relationships within our school community. Congratulations to me on your well-deserved success and continued growth. Your dedication sets an inspiring example for all Falcons. Overall, students are engaged, motivated, and looking forward to closing out the year on a positive note. The middle school students have completed one full marking period. Our 7th graders are into their quarter-two classes. The school year is in a full swing, and the students are acclimating nicely. Our parent partnership night was a success. It is nice to see our community come together and see what great things are happening in our district. The middle school concert is scheduled for December 11th at 7:00 p.m. Mr. Cooten and Mr. Ortega, as well as our students, always put on a great performance. It is a great way to kick off the holiday season. The week of December 15th through 19th is our Spirit Week, with December 15th starting with "Wear your warm and cozy pajamas, wear your ugliest holiday sweater, wear your Grinch clothing or green, wear your holiday best," and lastly, December 19th, 7th graders wear red and 8th graders wear green. Season's greetings from middle school. On behalf of the entire middle school faculty and staff, we extend our warmest wishes for a very happy and peaceful holiday season. We wish you and your family a happy and healthy New Year. See you in 2026. Our November newsletter highlighted a number of exciting updates and successful community events at Washington School. We are pleased to share the following. Our annual Thanksgiving feast was a tremendous success, made possible by generous food donations and the support of many parent volunteers. Students from the SAIL program also joined us, helping make it a warm and inclusive celebration. Parent-teacher conferences were held last week and ran smoothly with strong parent participation. We are currently preparing for a busy and festive December. This includes our upcoming Cookies with Olaf event in collaboration with the Service Learning Club on December 17th, as well as our holiday show on December 23rd at 10:00 a.m. in the gym. December 23rd will also be a single-session day. Looking ahead, schools will be closed December 24th through January 2nd, and will reopen on January 5th, 2026. We are also excited to announce the development of a lending library for our students. Thanks to numerous book donations, we are in the process of cataloging new titles and establishing a checkout system. This initiative will support reading engagement and provide students with expanded access to books. The PTO extends heartfelt thanks to all families who donated food or volunteered at the Thanksgiving feast. It was a wonderful success, and we are grateful for the community's generosity. Our holiday shop was today, and will continue tomorrow. The holiday shop is a beloved event that allows our younger students to shop for holiday gifts for their families. Thank you.
Now, I will share updates from our elementary schools, beginning with Franklin. November was a busy and exciting month at Franklin School. Their clubs and student activities planned several meaningful events. The Safety Patrol organized Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and the Student Council led the Thanksgiving food collection. Franklin School also celebrated their Falcon of the Month recipients. As Franklin heads into December, they are looking forward to holding parent conferences, which provide a wonderful opportunity for families and teachers to connect, celebrate growth, and set goals for trimester two. Franklin School thanks their staff, families, PTO, Board of Education, and community partners for their continued support. Over at Long School, students participated in activities centered on gratitude and engaged in fascinating new subjects through the new Amplify curriculum. 4th graders explored the medieval ages, 2nd graders are learning Greek mythology, and 1st graders are deciphering hieroglyphics, just to name a few examples. Long Memorial successfully concluded their parent-teacher conferences and also held their holiday gift shop organized by the PTO. Long School looks forward to the holiday performances by their music students on December 23rd and wishes Saddle Brook a wonderful holiday season. Finally, at Smith School, they are very excited to share that the Third Annual Thanksgiving Tradition, Balloons Over Smith School, was a huge success. Their students have become more creative each year. This year, they had balloons that were all different types of animals, gumball machines, Starbucks, cake pops, unicorns, ice cream cones, and more. Last week, Smith School held their elementary parent-teacher conferences over four days. This year, they had nearly 100% participation, with almost every single family signing up and attending the conferences. This in-person connection is a factor that will truly make a difference for their students as they come together to support and challenge them. Now, everyone is looking forward to Spirit Week next week. Smith Schools thanks their PTO, the Board of Education, and their families for all the support this year. Overall, all of our schools are excited to celebrate the holidays and wish the entire Saddle Brook community a safe and warm holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, me and Zuzi, and congratulations, Zuzi, on earning the Rising Falcon Award. I'm going to start with introducing Melissa Del Rosso, our Field Service Representative from New Jersey School Boards.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I'm Melissa Del Rosso from New Jersey School Board Association. I am your new Bergen County Representative, your Field Service Representative. So I don't know how many of you are familiar with the services we offer at New Jersey School Board Association, but if you need it, we're here to support you. So I handed out some paperwork, just some, you know, things for you to take a look at, to help guide you through the beginning of the new year, and also to talk a little bit about some of the topics of presentations that we can offer to help you in your training. The goal of New Jersey School Board Association and myself is to support all board members. So what that means is, to support you in your training, to help you do a role that you volunteer for, generously donate your time to, and a lot of people come from all different walks of life, et cetera, so when you come onto the board, you're bombarded with a bunch of stuff that you're probably not used to. So even if you're a seasoned board member, you may run into questions or, you know, just have questions about how things are done, from procedure to general questions of what other boards are doing. So that's what I'm here for. Anytime you want, pick up the phone and give me a call. My number's on the card. Any topic. And when we talk, one other piece of information that's kind of important, when we talk, it's between us. I don't go back and talk to other board members about anything that we discuss. So if you have a question that you're not sure of but don't know how to ask it, I say this because especially with new board members coming on the board, a lot of times, they spend their time, you know, for the first six months, afraid to ask questions, assuming they're supposed to know something. It can be a very daunting role to be sitting on a board. So if you're a seasoned board member, you probably have it down pat, but if not, don't be afraid to give me a call to ask questions and any way that I can support you. And then I will go one step further and invite you to come to the Bergen County meetings because it's really important for you to get involved on that level, to get to know some other districts and get to know what other board members are doing. It's a great opportunity for networking, as well as there's also more, you know, learning experiences there as well. You can get involved in the Bergen County School Board Association, give your input, and help elevate what is being offered to you, and also to support all the other county school boards. One last thing, because we also have the New Jersey level, so if you have any questions about getting involved, I know we just had the Delegate Assembly. I'm not sure if anybody here attended or was involved in that, but that is something that a lot of districts don't know. This is something that I'm learning new coming into this role. It is an excellent opportunity if you, as a board member, want to get involved in helping the legislature understand what you do and what you would like to see the state do, and have your voice heard as a board member who sits here on a regular basis and sees what's happening, and let the legislature know what is happening in your district and what you would like to see happen. So that's where the Delegate Assembly kind of comes in, and that's where the association is so important. We can talk at another time, but if you have any questions, I know when I was on the board for nine years in my local district, which was Old Topan, it took me quite a while to understand it. I went to a few of them and still didn't understand it. I can help you right through that, and I'd like to see more involvement from Bergen County on that level. That's pretty much what I have to say. Does anybody have any questions for me? Or... Nope? Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. So I look forward to seeing you in the new year for some presentations. I'm sure we'll probably do ethics or something along those lines, but remember, I can also tailor anything that you need. We can combine things to save time. I know your time's valuable, and thank you for everything you do. I've been there, done it, and it's not an easy job. And obviously, there's no pay. So thank you very much, and I wish all of you a happy holiday. And again, please feel free to reach out to me anytime, just even to say hello. I got my phone going all day long, so love to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. We appreciate you taking the time to come meet us tonight. All right, I don't have too many further updates. Middle school and high school concerts are coming up. Tomorrow's the middle school, and next week is the high school. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend tomorrow's. I have an event with my husband's job. If any of the board members are planning on attending, either via the board's Google Calendar, please RSVP, or let me know so that way we can be sure to save a seat. Last month, a parent spoke about receiving an email on his preschool's child absences. So the principal has since met with him, and I followed up via phone call, and I just wanted to make sure I covered some of the points that we talked about. You know, we discussed how daily attendance is required for all preschool students. Preschool attendance is recorded at NJ Smart, and it does appear in school performance reports. Strong preschool attendance improves readiness for K-3 literacy, numeracy, and social-emotional development. Preschool attendance does not count towards the state's accountability-based chronic absenteeism rate. However, chronic absenteeism is still calculated and publicly reported for preschool in the state performance reports. Our district responsibilities do include family outreach if a student is absent, mainly to assess any wellness concerns. We did update Washington School's handbook since that meeting, because he did notice a couple items where he was not wrong. And I wanted to share that our chronic absenteeism rate in 2022-2023 school year was 13.5%. Out of approximately 1,800 students, that's 243 students who were absent from school more than 18 times that school year. Since then, we've really been focusing our efforts, and our efforts have yielded a 9.4% chronic absenteeism rate in '23-'24. And last school year, according to our embargo data, it's not official yet, we had a 6% chronic absenteeism rate, so 109 out of 1,809 students. We're moving in the right direction. I want to thank my principals for all the follow-up that they're doing with their families, and thank our families and our students for showing up for school, because you do need to be present to learn. At this time, we do have a large representation from Washington School. Thank you very much for coming this evening. I'm going to ask our board members to transition over to the chairs for their presentation. So Mrs. Hannenberg, who is the preschool of Washington School, is here this evening, and she can introduce her staff that's with her. Thank you very much all for coming. It is... Thank you, Mr. Luminoso. He's going to make the tech go work. And we've been highlighting different schools each month at our Board of Ed meeting. So this month was Washington School's turn. We wanted to share with the board and our community everything Washington School is accomplishing. Since the referendum, we have utilized the second floor. We have four new classrooms. There's a lot of good going on at Washington School. Our program is growing, so we wanted to give them the opportunity to share everything that they're doing. And thank you to our students. We have several students from the Service Learning Club. They've been partnering with Washington School a lot this past school year, and we appreciate them for being here as well.
Good evening. My name is Brooke Hannenberg. I have the honor and the privilege of serving Washington School as the principal. With me tonight is Mrs. Laura Kalova. She is our preschool for general education teacher. Mrs. Jill Corzin is one of our three for integrated preschool teachers. Mrs. Jennifer Cannon is our school-based school social worker, and Mrs. Katie Austria is our preschool disabled threes half-day teacher. I appreciate you guys being here. Thank you. So, Washington School. Washington School, as I... This is my third year being at Washington School. Over the past two and a half years, I really have seen the growth that Mrs. Violetti noted. The teachers at Washington School not only deliver developmentally sound and research-based curriculum and instruction, but they make it very meaningful. So everything they do has a real-world component. So whatever instruction or lessons that they're implementing in their classroom, there is some type of event or field trip or real-life material that comes into the classroom to make it come to life for our students. Our preschool is, in comparison to other preschools that are not district-associated, we're fortunate in that all of our teachers are New Jersey certified. Many of them are dual-certified general education and special education teachers, which means that they have so many tools in their toolbox to meet the needs of our students on a regular basis. In addition to that, we're fortunate to have our related service providers in-house as well. So if there's a communication need, or a gross or fine motor need, or a social-emotional need, we don't have to go very far. We go down the hall, and we have a licensed clinical social worker, and we have a licensed speech pathologist, and a physical therapist, and an occupational therapist. So our INS team at Washington School serves a great purpose, and if there is a developmental concern, we get to those students right away, and we're able to see a ton of growth in a very short amount of time, and it's a beautiful, beautiful thing. We with... And you've seen here, we have general education, we have integrated preschool, we have preschool disabled, we have an ABA classroom. So no matter what the need is, usually, we are able to meet that for our students. Technology in our school is growing. We have interactive TVs now in all of our classrooms and our related service providers' rooms. So our students are interacting with technology and learning how to use it. This is the world that we live in now. So not only is it fun and engaging, but they're learning, again, real-life skills that they're going to need to apply. Lastly, but maybe most importantly, we are Falcons, and I say that because that is... And I say it in that way because it's all-encompassing. Us being a part of a bigger school district allows us access to so many things that other preschools just don't get access to. I just already named a ton of them. But for example, and I'll just give you one because there's 100, and we'll speak here from the Service Learning Club as well, but our four-year-olds, who are getting ready to transition to kindergarten, because we're a part of the district, will take field trips to, like, say Franklin School to participate in one of their assemblies, so that they get kind of like a kindergarten experience, and they get to be with the big kids and have different experiences that way. So it's just one thing that we're grateful for in being a part of this school district in particular, because everyone, the community, is just so warm and welcoming. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jennifer Cannon, our social worker, to talk about social-emotional learning in our building, and then everyone else is going to highlight something different.
Hi. Okay, so social-emotional learning is a key part of preschool, helping young children build the skills they need to succeed both in and out of the classroom. Through daily routines in play, children learn to identify emotions, manage frustrations, take turns, and work cooperatively with peers. These early SEL skills strengthen communication, support positive behavior, and create a strong foundation for learning as students move into the later grades. So this encompasses everything that we've talked about with having then a social-emotional club coming in and working with their students, getting to understand working, you know, with an older person.
Mrs. Corzin is going to speak to our curriculum.
Hi, I'm Jill Corzin, and this is my 14th year in Saddle Brook, and six of those I spent at preschool. I was also in other grades, but I'm back home at preschool in my favorite place, and I just absolutely love it there. We use the Creative Curriculum, which is a play-based program, and it incorporates language, literacy, math, and social interaction. We have various studies that we do throughout the school year. In Washington School in particular, we've done trees, balls, clothing, pets, buildings, recycling, insects, just to name a few. The parents get involved with what we do. For example, when we do our ball study, the children bring in different balls from home, and we communicate with the parents about how we're going to incorporate those studies into the classroom. When we do the ball study, for example, we have two bowling alleys set up, we have a golf course, and we have tennis, badminton. They play softball, and they do all of this in the classroom in a miniature version. And we have a clothing study, and the parents send in different types of clothing, and we talk about what the children wear and when you would wear certain things. So like Ms. Hannenberg was saying, everything is real-life experiences, and then we do a fashion show, and they get to dress up and walk down the aisle and get to show their stuff, and it's a lot of fun.
I highly recommend attending the fashion show.
Yes. So it's a very fun place to work, and the children are really adorable. You have to come to the fashion show, like Mrs. Hannenberg said. We also incorporate handwriting with our tiers, which is a multi-century way to teach early literacy. We have... They have kinesthetic, auditory, tactile. So for example, kinesthetic, we do writing the letters with our arms. They dance to the letters. They build the letters with Play-Doh. So there's something for everybody. They all... We have the wood pieces. They form the letters, so they see what the letters look like. And it's also presented in a developmentally appropriate way, as opposed to teaching the letters from A to Z. They teach them with... What the easier ones are to write. So the straight lines are first. So like letter L is two straight lines. And once they get used to the straight lines, they introduce curves, and then after curves, they introduce the diagonal lines. So it's very developmentally appropriate, and the children are very involved with it. They come up and they use the new line board, and they're able to do the vertical writing with their fingers, and they love doing that. They all come up and they get to write on the board. So it's a very developmentally appropriate way to teach handwriting and give them that early literacy exposure. That's it. I covered it all. You're welcome.
And it wouldn't be preschool, obviously, if we didn't talk about the importance of play. So Mrs. Austria is going to do that for us.
Hello, everybody. I'm Katie Austria. This is my fourth year in the district, and it's also an important town to me because my parents actually graduated from this high school. And I have the... I got moved upstairs to one of the newer classrooms this year, which is beautiful. So we use the elevator sometimes now with the little ones, and when they first start... I have the self-contained three-year-old class, and because it's self-contained, they're eligible to start the day they turn three. So I had many students start on their third birthday, and they don't always want to come to school and leave mom and dad, but that elevator button, that was a big highlight. So that helped them. So in preschool, play matters a lot. It's very important. A lot of my students and other classes as well come in without a lot of language, so the play really motivates them to want to be together and to want to use language. We use it throughout the studies, too, as Mrs. Corzin mentioned. Like, for example, when we do the building study, we'll build buildings with the blocks and talk about the shapes and the colors, and it makes it more motivating for them. It also helps with turn-taking and sharing. It drives the whole child development. Play connects directly to learning objectives. They learn best through active, meaningful experiences. It builds independence, and then we use the play for intentional instruction. And a lot of it, like my class really likes this little ice cream set we have, so we use, like, how many scoops of ice cream, or what color, and let's share, let's pretend to eat it, but don't really eat it. So play is a very important part.
So, and I just wanted to also highlight our new, what we've now grown to call it, the playroom. And this is kind of like a personal project for me since last year, and I want to thank you guys also for approving the purchase of this Funtronic floor, because the kids absolutely love it, and there are so many learning and fun activities that... Did I show it to you when you... Yeah. So I have a video of it, but in addition to... So in the playroom, yeah, so we have a little action shot of them playing. This is one of the activities. They can pop balloons. So there are a lot of activities that just get them moving. So they're jumping. Sometimes you can call out the colors. Five green one, jump on the pink one. They have to learn how to avoid each other and not bump into each other. They have... It's... I highly recommend, come over and play, because the soccer one here, there's actually a ball, and you could have a two-player game where you actually can, like, kick the ball and make goals, and it cheers for you. So it's really, really fun. It's interactive. It serves as a reinforcer for some of our kids who earn it to come and play with it. The possibilities with it are really endless, so it's been a really nice addition to our building. We also have a new Lego wall that we're working on here. We're working on a magnetic wall to play... Put magnet tiles to and build things. We have like a little train that they can ride on, and the room is carpeted, so it allows them a kind of quieter space as an alternative to the big gym for students who need that. It allows them some, like, good space on the floor to do floor puzzles and all kinds of different things. We're really using this room to teach a lot of functional play skills right now, so there's a lot, a lot of great things coming out of that room, so I wanted to make sure to highlight that. Oh, okay. So now, as Mrs. Violetti mentioned earlier, we do have, being a part of the district, we have access, like I said, to so many different groups. Zuzi mentioned in her report that we had SAIL come over and do the Thanksgiving feast with us. Service Learning Club comes over a lot, and they do a lot of fun events with our kids. And our kids love it because they're the big kids, and they sit with them, and they play with them, and they talk to them. And I think our service learning kids are getting a lot out of it, too. So we have Olivia, Olivia, and Mia, right? So if you guys want to come up and just say a few words about your experience with our Washington preschool.
So we were part of the Service Learning Club, and we went to the field day, which it was a blast. It was a lot of fun, and we were able to organize all the setups for the students, and they just had a great time, and it was...
It also gives us, like, a really good experience working with, like, younger age groups, because I know a lot of kids, or like, a lot of kids in our grade want to become teachers, and I feel like working with them gives us a really good view of what it's like, and we also get to, like, kind of learn about them, too, learn about their interests, what younger kids like to do now, and it's just a really great experience to, like, we get to, like, hang out with them, too. It's really fun.
I'm agreeing with everything that they said about us going there and spending time with them, but looking forward into January, Ms. Cannon and I are planning, like, a cute little snowball dance for them to attend, and it's just like a time for them to have fun. There's going to be, like, decorations, music, and like a bunch of crafts for them to do as well, and I feel like just seeing them all happy makes me happy, and like, planning this stuff makes me happy, so I'm glad that I was able to get this opportunity to do this.
Thank you, girls, so much. We really, really do appreciate it. It's an amazing thing, and we're so lucky and fortunate to have them. They do spend a lot of time working with their counselors, planning, and their teacher advisors, planning different activities for our kids, and they come and they actually do it. They paint with them, they give them instructions, they prompt them. They're like the best, like, free babysitters. And it's, and it's meaningful for everyone, so that's a bonus. All right. Mrs. Laura Kalova is going to speak to PTO.
Hi, I'm Laura Kalova. I've been with Washington School for nine, this is my ninth year, and I'm the teacher liaison, and I work closely with our PTO. Our PTO at Washington, our school is small, right, but our PTO is pretty mighty, and I feel like what you said about it being fun, right, is what PTO is sort of all about, because PTO raises the funds that they, they're able to use to put on fun events for our children. And to name a few is the Thanksgiving Feast. I think Susanna talked about that. They donate books, and Olaf comes at holiday time, and we serve cookies. They purchase bubbles for Neurodiversity Week. They purchase plastic eggs filled with some goodies for our spring egg hunt. They purchase butterfly bicycle kits, refreshments for Field Day, graduation. They came and helped us today and tomorrow for our holiday shop, and our onsite, which is the biggest, funnest event, our onsite annual petting zoo, complete with pony rides during the last week of school. So we are excited to announce that Mrs. Corzine and I applied for an SBA-sponsored grant that helps New Jersey public schools build community support and parent involvement in the schools. And the sponsorship was approved, and the SBA is awarding our PTO $1,300, which will cover the cost for that petting zoo event that will hold during the last week of school. So we're excited about that. Thanks, yeah. But that's what it's all about. It's lots of fun at Washington, and we invite you to come anytime.
What? Miss Laura, anytime, if I hear it, I don't know. Ms. Laura works endlessly and tirelessly with our PTO, so we really, really appreciate her and all the things that she does, and she's right. Our PTO for the last few years has been mighty and strong, and they have raised a lot of money, and they've done amazing things. And at every event, we are not short on having parent volunteers in our school, and we love it. They do come through. So one last thing before we sign off. We are working, as Suzie mentioned earlier too, we are working on cataloging our new lending library. We did happen to come upon a large donation of books, so we figured we have this space in our hallway downstairs that people kind of just walk by, and we're finding books there from when I think Washington School was a middle school. So we're kind of going through everything now, and our hope is that we can catalog books, make it nice and neat, and the kids can actually come down, check out books, and take them home to read with their families every week, so that we have like a library. So stay tuned for that. Thank you very much. Oh, I forgot to say, our baby falcon, I don't know if we introduced this yet, Mrs. Wolf, our art teacher, reimagined our baby falcon. So there he is. Cute, right? And he will be on our spirit ware, which is going to be for sale in the spring.
And it's painted on the hallways upstairs too, like peeking around the corner and stuff. It's really cute. Do we have any questions from our Board of Education? All right. I just, I want to extend a really heartfelt thank you for all coming out this evening. I mean, their heart is in their job. I can't even, everything that they're doing. And we as a district are getting better at including them in everything, and Mrs. DeBona and I spoke about including PD more, and we're getting there, but we appreciate your patience. For so long, they just really ran their own ship, and they're really doing such a fabulous job, and thank you to the staff, our students, and Mrs. Hannenberg for really building up our program. I want to just take a picture in front of the.
Thank you. Everybody. I couldn't get away without doing some. Well, I, I know, you have like sixty-something kids are coming. I'm so excited. They are very excited.
Go back to preschool knowing what you know now, right? Thank you. Have a good holiday.
All right, let's get back into it. Mr. Karate.
Okay, a couple items here. It's, it's the holiday season, however, for the business office, it's the season of reports. I mean, we're in the middle of our annual audit. We have a couple of state reports. The state school application, which will be for our state aid, is due next week. We have a mid-year budget review from the county office next week, and we have a health savings analysis report due at the end of December called Chapter 44 Health Savings. The budget development for 2627 school year has begun. In February, there will be another state review of our food service operations. This occurs about every five years. As far as the referendum projects, Mrs. Violetti updated everyone about the middle school, high school canopies, but they just installed the three flagpoles today at the athletic field entrance. And the other project that's in the referendum that's still ongoing is they're replacing a lot of various doors throughout the buildings, and that'll be done probably in the springtime. Election results from November 2025. I'll read the votes. We have Mariana Ionello, 2004, 54. Lawrence DeBello Jr., 2003, 46. Michael Alcomando, 2004, 89. And Vincent Laurentino, 2001, 24. The board reorganization meeting is set for 7:00 PM on January 5, 2026. At that time, I will give the ult of office to the newly elected board members, Mr. Alcomando, Mr. DeBello, and Ms. Ionello. So please join us for that evening. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only? Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anyone like speak? Anything to tell us? Okay, can I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So board action items, B2526.22 through B2526.24. Does anybody have any questions? Do you have anything you want to?
We reviewed all of this on Monday, Monday night's meeting, but I'll highlight some of, some of it throughout our meeting, but for board action, I don't have any.
Okay. Any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
On 2526.23, didn't we go through four IBS?
These are the ones that we spoke about last month, and now you're voting on the findings.
Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
A motion.
Give me a second.
Oh, motion, sorry.
Did you motion?
I thought I did. I didn't. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Now can I have a roll call?
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Rollo.
Yes.
Mr. Verso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Alcomando.
Yes.
Ms. Barali.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Ionello.
Yes.
Ms. Torbick.
Yes. Education curriculum? Ms. Ionello.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, E2526.39 through E2526.42.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
For the field trips, there is an overnight field trip for our concert band and concert choir and choraliers to the Mid-Atlantic Festival of Champions in Busch Gardens Theme Park. As I mentioned on Monday, they wanted, they do this every couple of years, so that every student that's in their program will have an opportunity, hopefully during their high school career, to do this overnight trip with them. And then there's our ski club trips, the FBLA for a competition, the Service Learning Club, and Honor Society are going to Washington School for an event, and then some of our grade level trips. Then for Point 41 and Point 42, those are two proposed new courses for next school year. I'll start with Point 42, the Dual Enrollment Interactive Multimedia. That's more of an advanced video graphic course or video editing course that we already run, but now with the dual enrollment in collaboration with Bergen Community College, they'll be able to receive their college credit. And our career exploration is for our, it coincides with our work-based learning program that is really growing here at our high school, and it's going to run similar to the way tomorrow's teachers runs, where our students go to their sites four days out of the week, and then one day out of the week, they meet with the teacher. So Mr. Schalcross proposed this, and there is a whole lot that we can do with our students. So we're going to divide our students into students that already know or have an idea what interests they have, and then ones that don't know, and utilize Naviance and other projects that he has created in order to guide them. A lot of like work ethics, resume, cover letters, problem solving, challenge, financial literacy, and earning projections, and there's, there's a whole lot. We are hoping that he'll be able to come one board meeting as well as we continue with this work-based, the growth of our work-based learning. That's it.
Okay, interesting. Oh, okay. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Rollo.
Yes.
Mr. Verso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Alcomando.
Yes.
Ms. Barali.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Ionello.
Yes.
Ms. Torbick.
Yes. Policy.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, POL2526.3, P2530, to R9130.
Second.
Thank you.
So I had shared this previously with the board. We did have a committee meeting before this meeting to finalize and review. These are mandated. The Governor signed a Freedom to Read Act effective December 9th, so this is only the first reading, but we're close to being in compliance. These policies are mandated. We don't currently have any policy or regulation for library material. That one's new, and the two others need to be revised to remove any reference to the term "library" and instead use "library material." And they also define a clearer procedure for selecting resource materials and the process for public complaints.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Rollo.
Yes.
Mr. Verso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Alcomando.
Yes.
Ms. Barali.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Ionello.
Yes.
Ms. Torbick.
Yes. Okay, we have no negotiations, so personnel. Mrs. Laurentino.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, P2526.32 through P2526.34.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
We do have, we have two resignations and one retirement. One resignation has a new grandchild that they're going to be taking care of, and one resignation is moving over to a different district. It is the town she grew up in. We have a retirement, we have a leave of absence. Then our appointments are three power professionals. We did add one who accepted the offer this morning, and one lunch aid.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair, why are there all numbers underneath 2526.34, number two, under the budget account?
There's, the powers.
Under the budget account line.
Thank you.
Yeah, they get appointed later when she's giving me the accounts and stuff. They'll have them on before you approve the minutes.
Okay.
To get a budget count and a unique position code.
The powers are a little bit tricky, because you have to state specifically if they're an ABA para, a shared para, what, like what type of position it is. So until we know exactly where they're going to be assigned, it's difficult to know.
Because I never saw that before.
Oh. Oh, that makes, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
You don't know where they're going to be assigned before you hire them?
No, our powers, we tend. For our powers, once they accept, then Mrs. Hannenberg has a process that she determines where they're best. Right now, we're short maybe five or six powers across the district.
Okay, so, and I truly don't know this. So do they not have certain certifications, like an ABA para as opposed to a regular para?
No, powers need to have 60 college credits or pass the para pro test.
Okay.
Once they're assigned, then we provide training and professional development to them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Rollo.
Yes.
Mr. Verso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Alcomando.
Yes.
Ms. Barali.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Ionello.
Yes.
Ms. Torbick.
Yes. Okay, do we have any committee reports?
No.
No?
No.
Just the schools?
Tony.
No, that's liaison reports.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Liaison reports?
Just quickly, I can go for Washington School.
Okay.
If you'd like. They did a great job highlighting themselves, so I thank them for coming today. Just some quick dates. The 17th, they're doing Cookies with Olaf, which is probably a can't-miss event. They're probably very excited for that. 1223 is the holiday show at 10:00 AM in the, in the gym. It's also a single-session day. 1224 through 1/2, the school is closed. Please do not come to school. And 1/5, school reopens. Outside of that, the nurse would like to remind everyone that if you must stay home if you have a fever of 100 degrees or higher, or if you've had a fever in the last 24 hours, if you've vomited in the last 24 hours, or have had stomach issues in the last 24 hours, please stay home. If you've had a positive strep test, please stay home. If strep is suspec, sorry, suspected, please wait for the culture results before you send your child back to school in order to not get other
We do have, we have two resignations and one retirement. One resignation has a new grandchild that they're going to be taking care of and one resignation is moving over to a different district. It is the town she grew up in. We have a retirement, we have a leave of absence. Then our appointments are three power professionals. We did add one who accepted the offer this morning and one lunch aid.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair, why are there all numbers underneath 2526.34, number 2, under the budget account?
There's, the powers.
Under the budget account line.
Thank you.
Yeah, they get appointed later when she's giving me the accounts and stuff. They'll have them on before you approve the minutes.
Okay.
To get a budget count and a unique position code.
The powers are a little bit tricky because you have to state specifically if they're an ABA para, a shared para, what type of position it is. So until we know exactly where they're going to be assigned, it's difficult to know.
Because I never saw that before.
Oh, that makes, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
You don't know where they're going to be assigned before you hire them?
No, our powers, we tend, for our powers, once they accept, then Mrs. Hannenberg has a process that she determines where they're best. Right now, we're short maybe five or six powers across the district.
Okay, so, and I truly don't know this. So do they not have certain certifications, like an ABA para as opposed to a regular para?
No, powers need to have 60 college credits or pass the para pro test.
Okay.
Once they're assigned, then we provide training and professional development to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Mr. Verson?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Alcomando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocello?
Yes.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes.
Ms. Torbick?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any committee reports?
Yes.
No?
No.
Just the schools?
Tony.
No, that's liaison reports. That's fine. Okay. Liaison reports?
Just quickly, I can go for Washington School.
Okay.
If you'd like. They did a great job highlighting themselves, so I thank them for coming today. Just some quick dates. The 17th, they're doing Cookies with Olaf, which is probably a can't miss event. They're probably very excited for that. 1223 is the holiday show at 10:00 AM in the gym. It's also a single session day. 1224 through 122, the school is closed. Please do not come to school. And 125, school reopens. Outside of that, the nurse would like to remind everyone that if you must stay home, if you have a fever of 100 degrees or higher, or if you've had a fever in the last 24 hours, if you've vomited in the last 24 hours, or have had stomach issues in the last 24 hours, please stay home. If you've had a positive strep test, please stay home. If strep is suspect, sorry, suspected, please wait for the culture results before you send your child back to school in order to not get other children in the district sick. And that's all I have. Any additional questions, please reach out to Nurse Tara at Washington School. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's important for all the schools, but.
Yeah. It's across the district.
Across the district.
I'm thinking that's an across the district thing, yes. Anybody else have a?
I have Franklin and the middle school, high school. I'll do Franklin first. The Franklin School PTO had their turkey tray brunch on November 15th. It was a huge success and they made a great profit. This week, they will have their holiday shop on Thursday and Friday where the students get the opportunity to shop for holiday gifts for their family, friends, and teachers. Next week, on December 19th, they will have their second annual Franklin Express where the students take the school bus to look at holiday lights and come back for cookies and cocoa with Santa. Franklin School would like to wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season.
I have the high school, just give me a minute. Middle school, high school.
Okay. They're looking forward to the annual holiday cheer breakfast for the teachers and staff. They would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season and hope to see them at the next meeting in January.
That's it. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
Long School just had a successful holiday workshop this past week. Thank you to all of those who volunteered. The LMS PTO truly values each and every volunteer. Their upcoming programs include, besides collecting PTO membership dues for $15 per family. The LMS has a sixth grade committee that is now hosting the annual Santa breakfast on December 21st at Applebee's in Paramus. Any questions about that or any of the sixth grade other fundraisers, please contact Melissa Traverso or Sherry DeCosta. Holiday class parties will take place on Tuesday, December 23rd during their half day. The PTO will provide a slice of pizza for all students and staff. Class parents will provide additional treats, small gifts, and entertainment. Please visit the LMS PTO website, which can be easily found on LMS homepage.
Thank you.
Weekly updates can be found on that website. The LMS PTO would like to take a moment to thank all who have supported our fundraisers and events. Especially special thanks to all of our volunteers. Happy holidays and happy new year to all. Next meeting will be Tuesday, January 13.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any correspondence? Old business?
You have some old business.
Sure.
All right, now that my tenure's over, I'm now old business, I'd just like to say a quick few words. And if I leave anybody out, I apologize, but I want to thank everybody I served on the board with, from Ansel Robinson, who got me to run, Steve Quinn, who took me out to eat to teach me how the board works, to Kelly Mahoney, Richie Shear, my great friend, everybody on the board right here, thank you for all you do and I wish you good luck in the future. I want to thank the two superintendents I serve with, especially Tony. Tony, you are the guiding light that makes the future of this district so bright, so thank you for all you do. I'd like to thank Ray. Ray's been here 19 years. Ray does a great job. He's very efficient. He's very effective. He was so efficient that today he texted me to remind me to hand in my fob and my computer. So thank you, Ray. I want to thank all the directors, supervisors, principals, especially the teachers in the classroom, because they're the backbone of the district, they're the ones on the front line. Everybody else in the classrooms, the powers, the specials. Want to thank our support staff, secretaries, our custodians. Just want all the employees of the town to know that I always had your back, not only in my words, but in my actions and my votes. So thank you to everyone. Just a quick synopsis of my six years. When we started six years ago, maybe it wasn't the smoothest time for the board, the administration. Right after I started, COVID hit. So that put a big bump in the road in talking to people. You know, maybe we're not at the level, people won't argue that we should be, but I will argue till the cows come home that we're much better off than we were six years ago. I think the reasons for that are we as a board, for whatever reason, we came together as one unit. We work seamlessly. We're not perfect, not saying we're perfect, but we do do a great job. I like to make the analogy of, think of us as a gear, a round gear with the teeth on it, that we're now turning smoothly. We're turning together, we're turning as one unit, which is important to the district. It's also very important that our administration has changed. In fact, Ray's been here 19 years. 10 superintendents, am I correct? Tony is the longest-serving superintendent that you've had.
Yes.
When I wrote down some names, we only have three people in the same position from when I first got, I want to put the little, all of this is not because of me, by no stretch of imagination. But I am a part of it, just like we're all a part of it. So I want to make that clear. But we only have three people in the same positions that when we, when I came on six years ago. But look at the all-star cast of administrators that we have now. Vailetti, Karati, and if I leave anybody out, I apologize. DeBonis, Bear Jenkins, Julian Qualley, Brooke, who was here tonight, Chris Ionello, our grammar school principals, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Wonder, Ms. Mansfield, especially our high school principals, because that was a little bit of a rocky time in the beginning. But man, did we hit a home run with Mr. Mice, especially Ms. Coffey, thank you for all she's done, and Will Osborne. So now think of our administration now as another gear, like the board. They've come together and they're turning smoothly. So now you've got the board and the administration all working together, all turning smoothly. And what that does is it drives the district. We have great personnel. So now our whole district, you think them as a gear, you've got all three gears turning together, all going for the common goal. And who benefits the most out of that? And it's the students of Saddle Brook. And at the end of the day, that is what we're here for. So thank you to everybody. The only thing changing now is my little part of the gear is coming out and you're putting Larry in. So I think the future of this district is, that's why I want to be a part of it, because it's only going to go up. My granddaughter starts next year in kindergarten. I have no qualms whatsoever with her entering the Saddle Brook School District. My kid's got a great education. I know my granddaughter's going to get a great education. I just want to wish you all luck, because I know we're not at our peak yet. We still have a long way to go till we reach what our pinnacle's going to be. Even though we've made great strides, you saw with the presentation tonight, I think we've seen the test scores lately that we've presented. So yeah, the future is bright for Saddle Brook. So I thank you all for my six years and thank you for the public for vote me for two terms and wish everybody luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurentino. I'll just segue right in. So I'm going to segue right into new business and we would like to actually bring Mr. Laurentino up because we want to present him. So I'm going to just read with a plaque while I'm at the microphone and then I'll stand up. So it's presented to Vincent Laurentino in grateful recognition of dedicated service as board trustee from 2020 to 2025, presented by the Saddle Brook Board of Education on December 10th, 2025. Okay. Does anybody else have any other new business?
Through the chair.
Sure.
I just, Vin, it's been a pleasure the last six years running with you. You've been nothing but a gentleman through everything and I wish you the best of luck in everything you do.
Sure.
And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Oh, yeah. Happy holidays.
Through the chair, I want to say the same.
Ms. Ionello?
Thank you so much for the last six years and I wish you the best of luck and wish you were still with us.
Through the chair.
Sure.
Just, thanks, Vin.